The need to order. You can all please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We can all our heads for a short term here. Heavenly Father, we just want to thank you for the beautiful weather we've been having. Allowing us to get city streets crack sealed completed. But I'll tell you what, Heavenly Father, we definitely are in need of a little bit of moisture. Also, please keep your thoughts and prayers on this meeting tonight. As we do our diligence for the city of Hazen and our citizens. In this great community, in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Alright, reading and approval of our minutes from the April seventh, which would have been the equalization meeting and the
Seventh was the regular meeting.
The equalization was again, yes, excuse me.
Motion approved as presented.
Motion by
Sorry. Motion approved reading for, motion approved minutes and suspend reading.
Motion by Weidrich.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor by saying aye. Aye. Opposing, same.
Aye.
Alright, approval of the agenda. Any additions, Monty?
Looks like you had in B one.
I added the, yeah, the concrete stuff, we got the other bid this morning.
We did, okay, good.
Wait, what should I approve as presented?
Motion by Fokerts. Second by Weidrich. Discussion. All in favor signaled by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, five A, engineers report.
Nothing requiring action on the engineers report. Jared is still working on the punch list items for expedition estates, he hopes to have that to me by tomorrow. And when he sends it to Will, he will at the Williams builders feel send it to me as well. Uh, the LA construction improvement project, they hope to resume the work that needs to be done and any rework on that one spot hopefully in May. And again, C C C O will start on the sanitary sewer project, it's a week of May twelfth.
Alright, any other questions, concerns of the commission? Alright, moving on. Five B expedition estates building permit moratorium.
As indicated in the notes, I was contacted by a resident who was looking at property out there wondering what the status was of the building permit moratorium. Yet for some reason it wasn't lifted and they did purchase, I had advised them that they could always make a request to the commission for that specific property or and it would be taken under consideration then, but put it on the agenda in case there was other thoughts from the board as to proceeding, how we want to proceed on this whole area. Since there are still obviously things to be done up there.
So Pat and I talked a little bit about this as well and um, I think both he and I are kind of the same mindset that before we even look at approving some kind of moratorium, I think we've got to get a punch list to provide to them and then with that punch list, some confirmed dates that they think that they're going to finish this up, because that's really our only real leverage to make sure that they do this and not abandon the project. I think that there's some concern that they may already do that when they're asking to buy the lots at, what was it, one point three million that he said? I think that there's a real risk that they're starting to look at this, that this may not be financially feasible. And so our only real ability to make sure that that project gets completed is to put them into a position where we say, hey, this is a punch list and give us these dates as to when you're going to complete it and then if you don't meet those dates, we can reinstate that moratorium, but I don't think, I think it might be a little bit premature to lift that moratorium until we get a little more information confirmation from them and I think that was kind of we're both, Pat and I, we've talked about it for quite a bit, um, this last week, had a couple of different conversations as to how that might look and what we might need to do and I think that the very first step is just getting to the bottom of what needs to be done and when they can get it done by and then I think we can have a little bit more of a real conversation.
Monty, have you heard any word in the last two weeks from Jared on any, any thing of that nature or thought we had some sort of?
No, like I say, he was hoping to have that done by tomorrow because he was traveling all day today.
Right.
And with the holiday, he didn't get it completed, but I don't know, he was still going back to the last televising at Eleventh Avenue. And so that he can present that to them as part of the punch list, I believe. And come up, see if they've come up with a plan as to how to, to address that. So I would agree with Mark that right now, we just kind of wait and leave the ball in their court as far as the punch list and when.
I agree, I believe it was back in January, we asked them for something that, you know, a timeline or something like that of when they're going to get this work done and I don't remember ever hearing back from them on it. Yeah, so I don't feel comfortable lifting it at all.
And that was presented in that part back in January?
I believe it was December or January that was sent to them asking, you know, timelines and what they're going to get accomplished, when are they going to get it accomplished, but I don't ever remember hearing anything back on that. And like, he did say, that's our only leverage we have. Well, if they get it done, we'll lift it. It'll be, yeah. Pretty simple, but if they want to drag their feet.
What else do we do?
It's in their, their hands, not ours. You know, they could have an excavation crew up there right now digging and finishing up the work. Maybe not so much the paving, I understand that has to do with, you know, the paving company when they're going to be here, but that source stuff, it almost sounded like he didn't knew nothing about it when he came to our meeting.
Yeah.
Which, I don't know if that's true or not, but pretty sure we've told them numerous times about it and.
Well, when was that letter sent out, Monty?
Early January.
That letter, that, okay.
Yeah.
Is that something we can
Track.
Yes, Jerry.
Only question for Monty, so the, the, the residents that came in inquiring about purchasing a lot, is that a lot that has asphalt in front of it already or is that one that there's no, the road has not due yet?
It would be one of the Far East lots, so there is no road up, out there yet.
Okay.
Well, I'm, I think, I, I think that's early teeth in the matter right now, is that moratorium. And I'm hearing, you know, kind of the same echoing, including Mark and Pat.
I'd agree with that, yeah.
Yeah. So, I guess I'd like to keep it on and then is that something we'd have to work through, Jared, to follow up on the January letter or did we as cities send that?
The letter was requested scheduling be communicated to the engineer so that they could address it then as well. I guess my thoughts would be postpone any action on it until you have the punch list and their response to the punch list.
Yeah. Guess we'd like, no, I'd, I'd like to table it, still keep it on the agenda, but table it and see if we get anywhere before the next two weeks between Jared contacting Tim or Daryl or something, is that a fair?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, Monty, if you could just table that for our next meeting, please?
Or do a motion to postpone action.
Or we could do a motion to postpone action. Do, do I hear motion on postponing of action?
So.
Motion by Weidrich.
Second.
Second by Fokerts. Any other discussion?
Myra, you got any input?
Well, I think the city's at risk, so I think we've got to do what's right for the city, honestly. Daryl needs to tell people that there's a moratorium and if not, I mean, there are some other lots in town.
Yeah, I don't like how it affects people who want to potentially build a new home here.
I don't either.
I don't either, I don't want to lose them to Beulah, but.
What else do we?
They, you, they, I was here when they told you they were going to have that street work done.
Yeah.
So. I, I think, I don't know what else you could do.
Monty, we need a roll call on this, correct?
Yes.
Roll call.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Fokerts.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Omen Hour.
Aye.
Motion carried. Moving on, request to citizen six A, street closure request wheelchairs and wall eyes event for May thirty first.
Be closing off Main Street for fundraising festival event uh, by Heritage Park over here, so we'll be closed from Second Avenue right beside City Hall to Fourth Avenue.
For twenty hours?
Uh, looks like eight AM to four PM.
Oh, it says four AM.
Oh. I don't know.
No, I'm sure it's
Yeah. And then what is
Event is ten to three, so I assume
There's a lot of the weird stuff, sometimes it might be four AM. Cold cold stuff, three forty five, come on, how you know?
Assuming it's four PM, do I hear motion to approve? Motion by Stern.
Second.
Second by Weidrich, discussion. What all, Monty? Are they having or?
I have no idea.
No idea, anybody know about?
I can ask Jennifer Goss and her husband who is putting it on and she works for us now, so I can get some details if you guys would like and report back at the next meeting.
I believe, I believe it's a lot with their inflatables, I've seen something on there that they were going to have some community event with their inflatables to kind of show off what they have for rent in the community plus, you know, give back to the community.
And I think Jennifer had said at one point they were hoping to get a few different food trucks in there, but don't quote me on that.
Got you.
I like food trucks.
Me too.
Myra, do you know what?
I can text her real quick if that's of any value.
No.
I was just kind of curious, I'm assuming it's something of that nature, I believe, I think what Mark said is correct. They spooked off from the community, so.
Do we do it to four AM just in case they, I mean, I'm sure it's a, an error on their part, but.
Well, I'm pretty sure it's
Because I mean, if they're out of there beforehand, I mean, that is what
Says the event's from ten to three, so I'm guessing it's not going to go till three o'clock in the morning.
Well, no, but who knows if they want to start later in the evening and four o'clock gives them a buffer or something, I don't know. I don't know what it takes to do the inflatables and stuff, but. I don't. Because if they're out there, if they're out of there by four PM, then great, right?
We're supposed to approve it as it's presented, so it's four AM.
True, this is a good tell.
Four AM. Because I don't know how Teardown goes, because we're kind of the same thing, so it's like, who knows?
So now that we have a motion to second, Monty. How do we need to?
We need to have a motion to approve the street closure.
We just don't have the time.
Well, you do, because it was four AM. It was sent as presented, which is four AM.
Sent as presented, okay, is that, is that what it's, could you read that back, Monty, the full motion?
Motion to approve the street closure with the assumption eight AM to four PM or as presented. Second by Commissioner Fokerts.
I don't work, any other discussion?
So are we going to want to wait on this then?
Well, at PM or as presented?
Really going to matter? I mean, are you intending to not approve it if it's four AM?
No.
He's still wishing Jerry was back, just to let you know, just like that. I said, he's still wishing Jerry was here rather than this.
Jerry, sure.
I don't know, it's just a matter of, I mean.
Yeah, we're not going to not approve it if they do need till four AM, so.
We've got both ways coming.
Monty has it worded as perfectly.
Yep, yep. Any other discussion? All those in favor signaled by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carried. Six B, local raffle permit to North Stars Baseball.
I reached out to the applicant requesting some more information as to the value and how the raffle is being conducted, but I have not heard back. It is a July raffle, so if you want to take action, fine, otherwise I will keep working to try and get our response.
Well, isn't the tax commissioner really cracking down on these, the way it is?
They, they want the information complete, yeah.
Which this would be considered not complete, right?
Correct.
I guess I, I would prefer to find out and table it to the next meeting because we got time.
Different cash values. Each day.
I'm assuming they're running it like this last year, but.
Fifty fifty raffle? That was my question.
That's what it kind of sounds like to me, but without it stated on there.
Yeah. I don't think the attorney general's office would approve it at this point.
Yeah, we'd get in the ring, right?
If everybody's okay, I'd like to table it until our between May, May?
May fifth.
May fifth, if we're fine with that, try and get some more info from, this is done.
I, I will reach out to her again.
Okay. Thank you, Monty. I just don't want to get caught, not in order, full details. Alright, seven, nope, excuse me. Moving down to reports, nine A, water sewer garbage.
No.
Uh, streets cemetery. Well, just spoke with Dave and Weidrich. I know I was putting clippings out in the fleet pile today and we must be scraping for a little work because that or somebody's just running the uh.
Oh, we were after pushing up the pile, where people are cleaning up your yard, so yeah, we've been busy pushing up the tree pile and the grass pile and we're doing the crack ceiling, so we've got a few signs and we're starting on the banners.
Yep.
School banners and that, and that's got some banners for the bypass, so.
I was going to mention that.
Jason, can I ask something?
Yes.
So with the bike path, is there a plan for the, has there ever been a plan for the cracks and this stuff on there? The wife and I were rocking on the bike path just last week. And it started opening up and have some.
The one between?
Between Senex and
Senex and
Between fourth and third. I noticed there, I mean, it might be elsewhere, but I've noticed there, there's pretty big cracks opening up and then cracks along lengthways along the track or they uh, break paths also. I don't know if there's anything you guys, if that's a crack thing too or?
Tar that will track. I'll take a look at it, we still have some tar left or whatever.
Appreciate it, because my daughter was like making jumps over and almost tripping because there some chasms.
But if they're, if they're big and wide, you couldn't put enough tar in there to
Yeah, and like I said, I
Make any difference, because either they're backed up here, you'd be wasting tar, but.
Yeah, I don't know what the remedy to that would be, but.
If some of them were big enough, we probably could put some of that pothole patch in there or whatever, fill some of the wider gaps, maybe or whatever, I'll take a look at it.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And then lastly, like Dave said, on the, on the banners, just to kind of elaborate on that, um, the veterans banners are discontinued and they're all handed back out, Myra, they are, she got a hold of my knowledge, she got, got a hold of everybody, that's good. This is a, this is an event that's free to the seniors, to the community, to the school. There was, to my understanding, enough money in whatever coffers to do the high school seniors like Beulah's done in the past. So they're going to start on Fourth Avenue over there, go to the south, travel on Main and then continue down to the north on Third up towards Mels. Whatever they have left for banners, there's forty one banners, Dave, forty or forty one, I think, it's a senior class.
I've been working forty to forty four.
Yeah.
Some might not be graduating this year. So forty to forty four.
And from my understanding, those get uh, after, I don't know when they get taken down, but all the seniors get them banners. So, it's kind of a neat thing, I, I've, not just because my boy's a senior, but every time I've driven in Beulah and see that, it's like, man, that'd be nice to do and here we have it, so. Hopefully that's going to be a continued event every year. They get your kids, the last year kids, Jesse, your kids, so. Good, good uh, community promotion for our seniors graduating and going on to the real world. Um, lastly, on nine B, the concrete repair from the city shop, Monty received the second bid.
We have the bid for Meisner and the previous bid from Winkler Construction, Meisner's bid was updated to be the same specs as what Winkler had submitted.
So six inch concrete rebar, right?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve Meisner construction bid.
That's pretty close, but Josh has come in thirty six and a quarter and what was Winkler, thirty eight, thirty?
Thirty eight or something, thirty eight fifty, two hundred
Thirty eight fifty.
Two hundred and twenty five dollars difference.
Motion, motion by Weidrich.
Second.
Second by Fokerts, discussion.
So I'm just wondering about the fine print there, I guess with the asterisks, I guess that's a hundred, a hundred and twenty five dollars for what?
Small load fee, fifty, if it's
Okay, so it's added in there or not?
No, he's, he, it could be added in there, but he usually tries to coordinate his jobs so that he can, doesn't have to worry about the small load fee. And even with
Even with that, he'd still be It'd be a hundred dollars cheaper than Winkler.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, Jason?
Jerry?
So is, I, I've not seen the bid, I'm sorry, but I uh, does he know, we want to have it like the steel pipe put into the ground as well? Um, for the canopy that we're going to put up and
Oh, no, no, Jerry, this is for the shop.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's in downtown, I'm sorry.
This is just for that, Jerry, the shop.
Yeah, this is in the middle, the middle bay, well.
Yeah, bay number two.
Bay two, Jerry, yeah. We, we table it last meeting, Jerry, for the fact of we wanted same, same bids. So Josh came in with a six inch with, with rebar. That was uh, comparable to Winkler's, so, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, my bad.
No, you're good. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Fokerts.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Omen Hour.
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, let's see, finance bussing.
So for bussing, uh, got a letter from both Peggy Ron and Candy McConnell. Uh, Peggy had given a resignation letter saying that she wanted to be done on the eighteenth, but we're currently going through an audit right now. And so she's got enough to stick her down until the thirtieth, so her last date will be the thirtieth. And Candy McConnell, um, one of the other drivers, she wants to uh, she, she's looking at moving on at the end of the school year. We got a couple of positions there that we gotta fill back in. So. That's what I have on that, is that something that we can post for right away, Monty?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do that.
Do we have letters from both of them?
Yep, in uh, my car.
As long as we have it in people.
Yeah, no, we have it in writing, yeah.
So, but, so Candace will be May twenty second?
She said that is weird, so.
That's the last day of school. And then?
I'll have to double check and get back to you, but
Yeah, that's fine, and then Peggy's
Whenever the audit's over?
Well, the thirtieth, the thirtieth, thirtieth, we'll have to, we're in I discuss, so. Yeah, other than that, I don't have much else at this time.
We'll have a, uh, let's see, is that Peggy's position part time? Excuse me.
They were all part time, they were all part time, yes.
So we'll have two different positions posted, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, in a way, you could probably get away with one full time on that, couldn't you, Monty, if they do both? Driving and the bookwork stuff, would that, yeah, would that be about enough for a full time position? You could probably, yeah.
Because I know she was kind of stretched, but.
Who, Peggy?
Peggy, yeah. I plan on getting with her this week. Maybe tomorrow or early next week. I plan on getting with her to discuss that, to kind of see what what her thoughts are on all that and kind of get a deeper insight into um, what would be most feasible, because you have to get boiled out all into one, you know, because I know she was, she was pulling, getting near full, she was pulling full time hours. I know that much, so I mean, I'm just kind of going to break it down and figure out what I'm going to get with her about that to see what, if, if you want to post, it, would it make sense to post it as a part time gig right now and then come back later and reiterate if we decide if we want to do like a full time thing or mess with that or?
We can post whatever. I mean, you could, you could post it as part time, but Well, so then you're kind of covered.
Or is that something that we would have to change?
Yeah, I would just post it as a part time, because then it can always be, when you get applicants, you can always discuss a full time or whatever in between.
Yeah, because if it turns out that it's not, I mean, even though it, we know it might be full time, but if it's not, then we're locked in
Sure.
To a full.
No, I, that makes sense.
That makes sense, get in this situation, you got to calculate in benefits and things like that if you're not already.
With the rate time stuff.
I would think though too, I guess like later on though, you know, in the school year, there's stuff, we're going to need another driver. Yeah, because they are, they are
Not going to be able to do with the two.
No.
No, and they are plumb, and I, and, to be honest, I have a feeling that we're going to be losing other staff because of the staff that we're losing now, if that makes sense, so, I mean, we're going to be I hope not, but I, I have a feeling we're going to be hurt fundamentally, in the, in the bad way, if, if we don't find something, because I know this, they are plumb full, darn near having to kick kids off this, you know, having to pick and choose which kids to pick up.
This school year, yes.
Yeah, because there's, there's a lot of the kids that they have been taking back into school, so I mean, they're a valuable service to a lot of people in the community and that's something that I don't want to deprive anybody of in our community, because, I mean, it's valuable, especially in the winter time and kids came out of lock and, you know, so. Kind of a source of heartburn, but I hope we can fill it with somebody who's just as good as, as the ones that we have now, not uh, sooner than later. So I got to go.
Anything else, please, fire to First Street?
We've got several things on here, um, so we went to get our SEBA certified again, which after Stan retired on the fire department, we really don't have anybody that's certified on ourselves anymore, so we're going out of a company out of Montana. And we got Surviv Air Packs, last year we found some used ones available for parts, parts availability Last year we found some used ones available for parts, parts availability on them is getting very hard to get. Um, and Cory called this guy this year to try to set up a time to come in and certify our SCBAs. He no longer can. Um, sounds like they won't even certify them anymore, they're just that outdated. So we're looking at two different models. Uh, Scott was one of them and MSA was the other one. We haven't, on the department, haven't made a decision which one is better than the other yet, as far as I know. I think that'll be talked about at the meeting tomorrow, not, not tomorrow, in May, um, but just figured I'd give you guys a warning there.
That's the.
That's the.
Oxygen packs.
Correct, so the bad thing is we just, you know, the last several years, we just upgraded all our bottles because they were way outdated. The bad thing is the new bottles won't work with either of these new packs. They, you know, I even asked about changing valves out on them. They can, but the manufacturer won't warranty it or something like that, so we're, we're looking at new bottles too to work with, with the pack. So it's gonna be a fairly large bill and we're trying to figure out how to do it if we're gonna purchase, you know, some of them this year and some of them next year, try to spread it out or, um.
Would you be able to ask for some gaming funds for some of that stuff?
We can ask for it, but they're not required to give it, you know, if it's a Tason winner sports, it earns all of it.
Uh, it might be worth an ask, cause I know, I know they've given to baseball before, so, I mean.
Yeah, they have, they've given to different. There's, there's always that, um, I know, I think it's already, you gives out a grant every year, I see West River gives out a grant every year. So we're gonna have to try to dig into them and maybe we can.
They give to the draft team at all?
I think that they are planning to, they haven't given us the official, cause they don't have a meeting until May, but I think that they're, the indications are that they would support that.
So we got hundreds of thousands of dollars type of thing or?
To be honest, I don't.
No, I don't.
Maybe God maybe used to have a grant program, but I'm gonna have to help fire department or municipal city. It sure does, uh, First Security Bank, I've seen them give out grant money before. There's a bunch of them available, we just gotta do the legwork to try, try to get some of them, hopefully, if we can get something.
Jason?
Jerry?
I tend to hear all the discussions, the little mumble, but as, I know, uh, Hesler Sports might be good on a tap into, but we did, did it or didn't say that already?
Yeah, yeah, we did, that's what we were discussing, Jerry, sorry. He's a winner sport, yeah.
I heard some other options, I didn't, didn't think I heard that he's a winner sport, so, yeah.
I also think that Rough Rider Electric gave the City of Halliday for their gym, I think they gave us six thousand dollars. So, and I think that their grant provides that they, you can qualify for up to fifty thousand, so that might be a big one to chase after too. They were kinda slow to get back to us, but three, six thousand dollars is, in our situation, it covered two treadmills for the City of Halliday, so might be a worthwhile ask too.
I don't know, I know, this has been several years ago, Monty, maybe you could enlighten CBB, are they still, since its community involvement?
They don't have extra work. Say, other, register out.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't know.
I think Antinet does, um, subscribe to a grant listing though, so you could, if you gave her some specifications, I bet she'd look at that.
Okay. I definitely have to remember that. Uh, other thing on my list is the vehicles up at the grass dump has been brought up that we use for the fire department for education purposes. We were asked to find someplace else to store them due to garbage up there. The garbage isn't coming from the fire department. The garbage is coming from the truck drivers that are parking up there. Um, a bunch of semi tires are getting left there, like they're changing their own tires up there and they're wheeling them in between. And I know Dave has mentioned it, it's kind of a pain to mow around and stuff like that. We get it, but we also don't have another place to store. So unless we want them right beside the fire hall there, I don't know where else to go with them.
I've, I've picked garbage bags out of cars too, where people have taken household garbage and stuffed in cars last night. Fairly regular, just to try to keep the roads down, I mean, it's.
Which, I get it, we just don't know where else to put them.
I know every time when we get new cars out there, the girls have said that they get bombarded with phone calls. People, can we go up there and take parts off these cars, parts off these cars or whatever, I mean, it's, it gets to be quite a circle. I get phone calls, can we get parts off these cars or whatever? People see them there and they think it's kind of a junkyard where they can dispose the stuff. So I've mentioned it to Adam and to Cory, the chief and assistant chief or whatever it was.
Well, I noticed today, there's a belly dump without any dollies up there.
It was a dolly dump, I think moisture, it sunk.
Yeah, it sunk it in.
Oh, it sunk, that's hard, so it's got a note on it yet?
I never looked to see if it's.
I think it's just not, that, probably, but I think it's not just, not loose as well.
I never looked, I just saw it pulling in, I'm like, oh, okay.
I still do it around there, it's part of my regular routine patrol schedule and, uh, for that.
But until we find a new place, we don't have much other option to store vehicles.
I mean, on the other hand too, I mean, for people to be able to take them from their yard or where they would otherwise park it in their yard and stuff like that, they can, they'll end up donating to the fire department and that's where they go.
Which a lot of them get hard in town too. Yeah, a lot of them are donated from people that just don't have a way to get rid of them, you know? Um, we did decide that we are, you know, limited to only six there at a time. Um, our scrap guy that hauls them away after we cut them up, all he can haul on his trailer is six. So we decided we will only live, only store six of them there, um.
You know, Ford left them there now too.
He brings it up when he loads.
Oh, that's his.
Yeah, that's his, um, he's, he's pretty, yeah, he's pretty good about cleaning up after us and everything. He's generally Johnny on the spot or getting up there next day or two after we, we do it.
Well, I guess I, I understand both sides, but I, I would hate to have that stuff, I guess, by the fire hall, I don't, I don't know if we got any, any other.
Use a way to, I, I don't know, should we tug it further on down the, down the fence, I mean, I don't. Maybe back by the, I don't know if there's a place back down by the concrete asphalt pile that's down?
That fills in with water back in there, that's kinda.
Yeah, okay, so that would be a nightmare.
Could a guy store it out at the landfill and cut off there with Candy, I mean, I know one time, I think, the fire department, we went out there and cut off cars.
I know we're pretty, she, uh, she might, she might, she might, I can't speak for her, but.
She may, uh, we thought about storing at one of the members' houses, but the problem is loading and unloading. Some of them are after vehicle accidents where you need.
Right.
A payloader to move them, you know? I got a skid steer, but it won't lift a one-ton pickup, you know, not even close. Even some of the cars nowadays, it won't lift at all. Well, then you get loading and unloading and you're tearing up trailers and stuff like that, you know, but landfill may be an option, cause she, if she's willing, she could set them on the trailer and then we could have you come unload them off of a trailer for us when we cut them up or just.
Or cut them off there.
She might have a scrap down there.
Or something there.
Trade for, uh, sarge too, who knows?
Jerry, Mr. Mayor, do you have any input on this or not, or?
I, I agree that it's kind of becoming a little dump pad out there, but I think we approached Candy very gingerly. See if, uh, that is spot out there, that, that may make sense, but other than that, I know that behind the fire hall, I keep putting up barricades because they don't want trucks to be driving through there and parking there. Well, if there, if there were cars, it's up there, they there, so.
Yeah.
Is that, is that why the barricades are up there, right, so the trucks aren't driving through there?
Yeah, not so much them driving through there, uh, especially when they're paving through town. They dumped a whole bunch of tar out there without, you know, even asking if they could park there. You know, you got lots of people that are parking there and going over to Senex or parking there for a weekend and taking off without even asking permission to.
Right.
You know, so that's where the barricades came from and then, then we did, uh, it was one spring, it was fairly heavy with truck traffic after the thaw. Well, they rounded it up pretty good and we tried just posts, but, you know, signs on it stating, you know, fire department property, they literally just drove over the top of them and busted the posts off.
Did? Yeah, I understand.
They, you know, we really wouldn't have a problem if they're trying to drive through there to get to Senex or something, you know, or parking just to go into Senex to grab a bite to eat, but, you know, we did have a farmer one time park right up against the building with a broken truck.
I remember that one.
You know, broken semi, it, he eventually ended up getting a tow truck to haul it away.
That was damn near, that was over a month, wasn't it?
Yeah, and right up against the fire hall, not even out by the tree row. Though, I know, I think it was last summer, him, do you ask us if they could store some street light stuff out there? And they asked us and Cory, Cory gave them permission to use it, you know, so we don't have a problem, it's not one of those.
Right.
Treat it nicely type of things.
Yeah. I agree with Jerry, if we just gingerly.
Yeah.
And politely talk to Candy.
I'll stop out and talk to Candy one of these days afterward. Um, the other thing is I got, just wanna mention tree pile, starting to get fairly big, but our county's got a burn ban on, so nothing we can do about it until they lift that.
So it just lifted a little later again.
So just wanted to bring that up in case anybody's asking. Um, also got, uh, calls for last month from the fire department. We had a grass fire south of town, uh, on the, it'd be March twenty-second. And then March twenty-third, we get repaged to the same grass fire. It, there's a previous burn that wind just relit twice. Um, we have motor vehicle accident in Zap, uh, on March first. March first, again, we had a chimney fire out at Hazen Bay, um, not March, sorry, April first. Uh, April third, we had a motor vehicle accident by Harco. April third, we had another grass fire up at Pick City, that one we did get turned around, Pick City gun it out long before we got there. Um, April sixth, we had a house fire on County Road Nine, and it was a fairly large one. And then we get paged, paged on again on the seventh for the same one, relit. Uh, that was a all-night fire, so it was kind of a busy month for us. And then the other, only other thing that's not really under my portfolio, but a TV tower north of Hazen. That thing blew down.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-twenty-one, yeah. And I've heard two years in a row that we're gonna get it up and fix it, but yet we still haven't done anything with it.
Which?
There's a TV tower north, uh.
Ray Transmission Tower.
Yeah, I would say, grab a road there.
On, uh, Sixth, I think it's Sixth, though, Satellite Road that they call?
Yeah, Satellite Road.
Right there.
So that rebroadcast the signal, cause if you got bunny ears in town, you can't get nothing.
And we.
Reon that, so we're paying electricity up there.
Oh.
But the tower's been down since twenty-one. Um, the TV stations. Yeah, all the equipment's still operating, the TV stations donated all the equipment.
Okay.
For it, but the tower blew down. And at one point, I know McLaren's offered up his crane to help fix and reset it, but.
I'll tell all the stories, that, is it regarding lighting or anything?
Tower was eighty feet.
Oh.
Rough Rider put a pole in so we could try and reposition the antennas on a thirty-foot pole to see if it did any good.
But, yeah, so it's a matter of getting time and guys to go do it. But this has also gone on three years, understand that. If, if, what I'm proposing, if we don't have the time this year, let's hire somebody to do it. Find somebody, maybe Mark Olson will do it, or, um, Clarice, maybe they will just refix the tower and set it themselves, um.
The tower itself was in pretty rough shape, I was up there and looked at the tower. We're not capable of really remounting the antennas on that wooden pole, I mean, you're gonna have to fabricate brackets for these antenna, big antennas or whatever to fit a wooden pole instead of a steel bracket. Plus have to unwire them, you know, get all the wiring off them so you can actually move this, so it's really nothing we can do ourselves.
So this be a bid thing?
Almost sounds to me, Monty, I'd bid.
Oh, I'd say.
Just talking electrical, is that something?
It's not really electrical, it's all coax for TV antenna. Except for light, maybe that was on the pole, which.
Which you wouldn't need.
The warranty.
I mean, I, I know, I know Rough Rider has, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out here, I worked subcontracting building powerline, I know there's eighty-foot transmission poles. Now that, I don't, I don't know, we'd have to contract that out, cause we don't have the capabilities to do that, but I guess I, either I ignored that, but I don't, I, I didn't know anything about that.
Anything on that, if you need.
Is that something we can reach out?
They're, they're, they're putting up, uh, transmission lines out, out east, I don't know what company's doing that, but.
I don't know if it's something we could re, I, I don't think a power company's gonna do it. Um, you're gonna have to get a private, like Olson Electric or RK Electric or, um, Jeff, whatever his business is called. Um, I don't even know what he's calling his business, Osland? He's got a little.
Well, you're gonna, they're gonna.
I was dead, I was tapped.
I mean, they're gonna have subs because they, those guys don't have basket trucks to reach that high there.
Cause the eighty-foot pole that was there, why it came down is when the guy wires broke or the anchors rusted off. So an eighty-foot pole, if it's a steel pole, it's gonna have to have guy wires again, I'm assuming.
Well, I would think if you're going up eighty feet, even on a wooden pole with four TV antenna, you're gonna have to have guy wires.
Guy wires or whatever.
We can try and figure out what's gonna take and contact different companies to get some estimate.
At least get some estimates and see if there's.
Yeah, we don't even know the antennas laying on the ground, if they're any good, I'll bet they're damaged, I know some of them, some of the little rods or whatever broke off. How many of them can be missing and still function, have no clue.
So then too, you know, the conversations, I guess, that I can recall, you know, is it's not ever, ever really been like used, um. And too and stuff, you know, the times it worked and stuff, I couldn't get it to work.
You couldn't get it to work?
No.
I know I've seen quite a bit in the last few years of people complaining that they can't get nothing with their digital antennas in town.
Yeah, that's the problem, I think I ran.
And you go up by my dad's place and he gets twenty-some channels up there, you know?
So all that equipment is updated for the digital stuff?
I know, that's.
I'm just gonna ask. Log stuff.
It was all.
It's all, it's all updated, digital stuff.
Was that after the tower went down or before?
Even on that little, from that black box and it had that flat, I guess, antenna on that box and stuff, it wasn't like prior to that, it didn't work at my house, so, I mean.
You know, or, or we just pull the meter.
Yeah.
And be done with it, so we're not paying electricity up there anymore.
Jerry, you got a comment, Jerry?
Yeah, is this guy, does this, if this, you know, we business dump the cost? It might be something we would just wanna get rid of, I mean, is this our responsibility to let people be able to get TV channels and down? With digital and every, all the streaming and everything else available that you have, I mean, this went down to the twenty-twenty-one, not, I, something we might just wanna put to bed.
Do we own that land up there or who, do we got a lease agreement on it?
There's no lease agreement, um.
Is that Rough Riders land?
Yeah, does that work?
Believe it is, cause there is no lease on it, you know, so, um, that I have seen that we have anyway.
So we're, we're just basically losing, but we're paying for power through that we're not using. And so they're spending a little bit more to continue paying power to get this digital television signal relayed with our equipment. And so you gotta spend a little bit more to continue paying power to get this digital television signal relayed with our equipment, essentially. Or just ex-nay the whole thing.
The only concern that I would have is if you pull it all together and say, hey, we're not putting it back, is, are you cutting off a. Portion of the population from getting emergency services and stuff like that for severe thunderstorms? And things like that, because there is a population that relies on that, that you might otherwise be cutting off access to. And generally, that's not a problem, but for that three or four days a year, that might be pretty valuable services to have. Especially if we get, were to get a pretty severe outbreak of storms or something of that nature.
Mark, is that something we should talk to with our Mercer County Emergency Manager?
I think I, that's kinda what I was thinking, yeah.
It's a good idea, maybe they got some, some way of helping. You know, maybe it'll require a brand new tower be put up there, but, or a new used tower.
But maybe they might have some way of giving, some kind of funding to get that back up even.
Or it might even be something that they would be interested in, some kind of a cost share, because it benefits more than just the direct city of Hazen. I mean, everybody in the outline areas gets a benefit from that too. That to me is the perfect scenario where you would get some kind of a cost share.
Cause is that, is that like an omnidirectional thing, or is it several antennas in different directions?
No, it's just several antennas, all like one directional for each station. Basically, there's four different stations that were part of it.
And they're directed towards Hazen area, and then your, your guys land up there, it's just kind of an offshoot of that, I suppose.
I like that idea, talking to, uh.
Because it's up on the hill.
Yeah. Talking to Mercer County.
We're gonna talk to them about it, maybe reach out to Olson, like Kirk and R K and see if they're even remotely interested. Or it might just be a flat no right away and.
Or we might get something from Mercer County since.
Yeah, they might have that.
Yeah.
It's early enough that if you get some estimates, if you could approach Mercer County as we're coming up on budget season. Might not necessarily set us up for getting it done this year, but.
That's right.
It could.
Get the ball rolling.
Yeah.
Not fair, Monty?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope, that is, all I have are done.
Okay. H C D.
We just had our annual meeting and we have one new director, Mackenzie Weidrich, who owns the gym. Is our new director, so this year we only have eighteen. It's tough finding someone this year, plus I don't know. People who wanna be on it very well, so next year we should go back to nineteen, I'm assuming. Buster and, um, C V B are continuing to work on the S R seventy one project. It sounds like R K, I think it's R K, in Golden Valley is maybe so busy they can't get it done.
Seven K?
Sorry, thank you. So they may look at others too, and, and M A K was okay with that. We have four new flex pace requests coming up tomorrow, so that is good. Um, Hazen Golf Course is looking at doing some improvements on their patio and they've asked for. Some dollars from a few different organizations. We're still working on that community-based tech ed program. The guys aren't quite ready with their evidence on whatever yet, so that will not come to our board tomorrow. And, um, one of the businesses asked me to talk about business grants and community forums with the board, so I will bring that up tomorrow also. So lots, lots of little things going on.
Good. Anything else?
Not that I can think of unless you have questions on them.
No. Mister President, do you have anything to add?
Monty, did you put anything on these gender forums?
Now, since we do not have the bid from Winkler yet, I didn't think it paid.
Hey, I just thought, I just wanna throw a few words in about that. Um, this is, this is my, my fault, I've not been on this, uh, enough, but. That triangle needs to be taken care of A and S A P. Uh, the tree's gotta come down. Concrete out of there, we're waiting for one more bid. Um. This is a, this is something I really wanna have done by the All Store Union. It'll just dress up our main street quite a lot. Uh, be another nice gathering spot for people, uh, shelter, uh. Just, it, 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 it's a nice door and I'm hoping that, uh, it all agrees that maybe sales tax dollars would be the best way to take care of this. Um, we've got one, one bid, hopefully we get the other one soon. But, uh, you know, that'll be also, like I was mentioning, there's, we, in the middle there where there's a tree already cut down. To put like, uh, we've talked about this before, a permanent Christmas tree stand or, you know, you obviously have to put a picnic table over it. Something like a, it'd be like a six inch. Steel pipe in the ground, so it'd work as a Christmas tree stand, um, and a few other, you know, two to three inch sapper. Pipes to hold up, uh, the sun, the sun shade sale, um. But it's, it's a simple project, it's not, it's not, it's something that is also obviously. You know, the winter, we have to take those down so they be up, put up there on the top of those poles with, uh, turnbowl and. Uh, uh, it'd be a. Low maintenance, not like the pocket park where there's a high maintenance over there and lots of, lots of goo and keep the wood stained and weed full. Uh, this would be all pretty much maintenance free stuff. I know that. H C D and Chamber, um, and even, uh, C V B would put money towards furnishings for that. But I think it's our responsibility to get that. Concrete and ready to go, so I have. Hopefully we get a bid soon, and I really hope you guys support that we get this push to be done for by the All Store Union. That's just my nickel, uh, on that.
Well, Jerry, this is Jason, I, I agree, but, um, don't. I'll just kinda scold you a little bit, don't feel bad for not being at our meetings. Um, that, in my opinion, you've got, you've got a battle to battle yourself and, but I, I appreciate you bringing this up, Jerry.
Yeah, I've been talking about this for a year, little Jase, I've only been on a mission for three months, so, um, at that time, but I appreciate that.
Yep.
The only thing I have with that, Jerry, I'm all in favor of replacing it, is the pipes in the ground. What's that gonna do with water and freezing and thaw? Is, is there other communities that have done that and have had good success with that, or? I mean, I might not be so much geared towards you, or more towards our engineer, but have you looked into that at all?
Yeah, absolutely. I've got different examples from, from around North Dakota, that I've seen that they, that they do it. And, uh, even other, you know, uh, Minnesota, Montana, things, things, parks and, um. City, uh, not city, but recreational areas that have done it, so, you know, they, you know, the, the pipe would have cap, caps on them too. To keep the moisture out of them.
Okay, that's what I was wondering about, if it was just gonna be an open hole, let moisture in there, the concrete. In my mind, wouldn't last that long, but if they got a design of a cap on it.
Uh, you're exactly right.
You also wanna reach out to that other company on the center for a bid too? For a concrete bid? So maybe we can get through it?
And we may not, you know, to begin on a timeline too, we may, if there, you know, close bids. We may not take the lowest, it might be one that we get quickest too, right?
Correct.
But obviously can't be a huge difference.
My, do you have a?
Wonderful, because Antonet is dubbing it as magnificent Main Street. Just want you to know, it goes with what Jerry is saying. I don't know if you can hear that, Jerry, but. He probably couldn't, my voice isn't very well.
I didn't hear, what was that comment?
Can you repeat it? He won't hear me.
Antonet is dubbing it fabulous Main Street.
Magnificent, Monty.
Okay, shocker.
Monty's trying to steal the whole naming scheme by naming it fabulous, I mean, no, it's magnificent.
Well, Monty, if you wanna just keep ties with Jerry on that, keep us informed when I work. Anything else, Jerry?
No, thank you. I'm just glad to be part of the meeting today, guys.
Well, we're, I was happy to hear your voice, to be honest with you, so, glad to have you.
I, I planned, I actually gonna try to make a surprise appearance, but. I have some confusion, it may just didn't go real well, so I'm, I'm actually laying in bed, I'm just.
Well, again, we appreciate you being in spirit though, so. Uh, if there's nothing else moving along here, ten A, Rathen Meyer P C representation letter, Monty?
Uh, as part of the annual audit, there's always the representation letter that we provided all the information, that there's no pending litigation. A formality is part of the audit that they include.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Weidrich to approve.
Second.
Second by Folkerts Discussion.
Same thing as always.
Roll call. Weidrich.
Aye.
Folkerts.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Hi.
Omenour.
Aye, Monty, thank you for keeping things in order, we appreciate it.
But I promise you, if I see fabulous in those minutes, I'm gonna.
Motion carried, ten B, Pocket Park Maintenance, Hazen Chamber.
Again, um, I have an annual thing over the last several years. The city has provided two thousand dollars for maintenance of, and beautification of the Pocket Park. And Main Street flowers, which I don't know what's happening with the Main Street flowers yet, but I know they are working on something.
So I had pulled Antonet aside the other day and kind of asked her about all this stuff and, um. Just explaining everything that a two thousand dollar scope for, goes to, it's kind of a lot, majority of that is eaten up towards, you know, your electricity. So we have all the electricity that's not running at rate. Um, that was cut by a utility company or something like that? Maybe they got that, either way, it goes to electricity, security, or just all that infrastructure type stuff that goes into that park. And it doesn't really need much room to, uh, to add to or, you know, to kind of maintain the other things in that park. And so I asked her, she, you know, what she felt she might need, and I told her that, you know, we're looking at. We, we've been doing two hundred, two thousand dollars over the last hour and a half years. And, uh, she was telling me about the sensory garden and how she wants to kind of add some things to that, and it is in real rough shape. So I would like to make a motion to, for this year at least, uh, to do three thousand dollars to the chamber for the, for the Pocket Park. Maintenance and to, um, add those things that she's looking to add to for that sensory garden. And just kind of leave somewhat meat on the bone for them to do things in that park.
Second.
Motion by Folkerts and seconded. Roll call.
Folkerts.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Stern.
No.
Hack. Hi.
Omenour.
Aye.
Motion carried. Ten C, S M C Foundation Golf Tournament Sponsorship.
Another one, basically they're doing their golf tournament, they have different sponsorship levels. If the city wants to participate as a sponsor for the golf tournament. What have we done in the past, Monty? And we have never been asked in the past.
What are the thoughts of the board? One thing I.
I would think.
Go ahead, Jerry.
I would suggest we would do the silver sponsorship, the three hundred dollars to have our, the city, the city's name on the course. Um, anything more than that, I think is, uh, when I've golfed this tournament many times and many other scramples. And then it's really nice to see the whole sponsors and the names of those, but above and beyond that, I think be, uh, I don't think. It'd be worth our money to go beyond that.
Is that?
That's silver sponsorship for three hundred dollars.
Monty, Jerry can make a motion, right? Or not technically.
He can.
Since he's not presiding? That's an emotion, Gary? You're allowed to make a motion.
Yes, my motion.
Motion by Omenour.
A second.
Second.
First motion in twelve years.
Second by Folkerts Discussion.
One thing I, I have an issue with is it is a private business. I know it benefits the public, but it is a private business. And in the last thirteen years of me being in the fi, on the fire department, I've seen the amount of transfers. That they transfer to Bismarck for no reason, just, I, I don't know why they do. It's a trauma center, more than capable of handling some of those issues. But they choose to transfer them anyways. That's money out of that hospital's pocket. Plus it's more of a burden on that patient. Um, that's where I have an issue with it.
So I'm the chairman of this, or the chairperson, I should say, this Cocklea Medical Foundation. And I think that one of the big things that they're looking at, and they are five oh three, I don't wanna sway you guys one way or another, but. Um, they really are looking at trying to make some equipment upgrades in the next few years that, um, really provide a lot more services for the community. Um, and it's kind of an ever-growing list as to some of the things that they can do. And this is one of the, I'll say, bigger fundraisers that they do throughout the year. Admittedly, this is the first year we've ever asked you guys to participate. I didn't know that they were going to ask you, but, um, everything that we receive as a foundation goes directly into purchasing equipment for the hospital.
Any other discussion? So we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Omenour.
Aye.
Folkerts.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Hi.
Weidrich.
No.
Motion carried. Ten D, N D I R F Annual Meeting Voting Proxy, Monty?
Yeah, North Dakota Insurance Reserve Fund has their annual meeting on May eighth in Bismarck. Generally, in the past, we've always just submitted the proxy to vote for the city representatives on their board. Uh, the person nominated for cities this year is Darcy Healy, who is the auditor. And Wapatin, I believe. Just wondering if anybody wants to attend or if you just want to proceed with doing the proxy again this year.
Any heartburns of just doing the proxy again from the board? Think we're good.
That'd be my choice.
Do you need a motion for that, Monty? Motion and a vote or not?
It would be best, we just.
I'll make a motion to go with the proxy vote.
Motion by Weidrich.
Second.
Second by Folkerts Discussion. No discussion? Voice vote, all the drivers by, the signal by saying aye.
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 Motion, or, uh, no same sign, motion carried. All right, down to public comments. Any public comments? Hearing none? Uh, fourteen, approval of the bills.
Motion to approve, bills are presented.
Motion by Weidrich.
Second.
Second by Folkerts Discussion. Roll call.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Folkerts.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Hi.
Omenour.
Aye.
Motion carried, even adjourned.